Bookley.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Polinski.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bookley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted this governmental body. Mayor conduct shall respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all of our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hail At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous flight Over ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, see does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the wonk of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. I welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. And with a full house, let me remind the community that that beautiful rendition was from one of our own local artists, Mr. Jim Davis. This evening, if anyone would like to come speak before us on any item that's on the agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less with the crowd. And if everyone does want to get up and speak, we will be enforcing the five-minute limit. With that, we'll move on to our council agenda.
Item four, the consent agenda. The following items are considered view routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the June 16, 2025 city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the June 24, 2025 Civil Service Commission meeting certifying Joel Poppy as a police officer candidate. Item 4C, resolution number R25-93, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And item 4D, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you wish to remove from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the current consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing amend the economic development plan.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing? And for the public's knowledge, this is the economic development plan that was approved with the June 10 mail-in ballot vote that the public had last month. So that is the reason for the public hearing. And seeing nobody from the public is here.
I move the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 7A1, ordinance number 25-09, authorized by the voters at the election held on June 10, 2025, to consider an ordinance to amend the city's economic development program.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 25-09 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 25-09 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 25-09.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 25-09 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 25-09. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item 10A, committee of the whole from July 7, 2025, 10A1, review of city council rules. The committee recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, move for this report be adopted with the changes or as is, right?
So the four, the two items was the two to four, and that is state statute. The other item that Mr. Roth requested was that the draft, that it say that the draft gets sent to council to, it is presently, but he'd like to say that. So if we want to change it, I probably should update this motion to include that if you all want to do that.
I see some nodding heads. I see some deer in the headlights looks.
I would think you'd want to change it. Well, if you don't want to, what's the council's pleasure?
Well, I think council should be included.
I'm updating it. Just give me a second.
And while she's updating it, this is kind of like church, but there is room up front, everybody. So if somebody else comes in, you're more than welcome to come up to the front for some open spaces.
Neil, do I need to amend my, to reflect what she's just typing in?
Yeah.
This is just the report, right?
This is just adopting the report right now. Yeah.
As written in?
As amended, yeah.
Okay.
Did it update it? It kicked me out.
So we have a motion to adopt the committee report as amended.
Do I have to reread that? I move that the report be adopted with the addition of including the city council in distribution of the draft agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, quote from Wilkie Landscape Center and the amount of $17,691.59 for downtown landscaping. This is CIP number 23-01.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Wilkie Landscape Center for downtown landscaping be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilman.
Question, is this the only quote we've gotten? There's no others attached to mine.
Yep, Jean can answer that, but I know she tried to get multiple quotes.
I did try to get multiple quotes. I did have one landscape company come out and look at the site, but then not quote, and I couldn't get return phone calls from the other two that I had called. So this is the only one that we have received, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And these are the cutouts and the concrete that we just poured?
Yeah, that's correct. The ones over on 11th and 23rd and 11th, and then the two parking, I believe, two parking lots.
And the city is paying for this as opposed to the downtown development or improvement district?
Correct.
The city council included funds in this CIP for this type of thing, and that elected official sponsors wanted to move forward with this.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, quote from Kidwell and the amount of $16,000 for three-year renewal of the telephone system maintenance.
Who moves that the quote from Kidwell for renewal of telephone system maintenance be accepted?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Kidwell. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion pass.
Item 13C, quote from CDW government and the amount of $16,368 for eight dispatch televisions for the joint communication center.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the quote from CDW government for eight televisions be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from CDW. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, quote from Jones Automotive and the amount of $28,065.79 for emergency lights and sirens for five investigative and three administrative vehicles for the police department. CIP number 21-05, 06, 07, and 08.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Jones Automotive for emergency lights and sirens be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Jones Automotive. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, comments from the mayor and city council members and compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members with items to discuss this evening? All I'd like to do is, number one, point out, we have some different faces on the other end of our council chamber table. Our city clerk is on maternity leave, and we have Renee and Vanessa filling in and helping. So thank you for filling in and helping. And on this end of the table, look who we have back with us from maternity leave, Kat. So again, Mom, welcome back. Glad to have you. All right.
I had one item. This is the first year that I observed the red-white kaboom display put on by the chamber out at Dag Park. I was amazed. It was an excellent, excellent demonstration program. January 8, kudos to the red-white kaboom folk. They did a nice job.
Very good. All right, we'll move on now to resolutions this evening.
Item 14A, resolution number R25-94, adopting city council rules. Again, I am going to.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number.
Print. We've got to update because of the changes we made. So just give it a second here, and we'll get it updated. Good. All right, print. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R25-94 be adopted with the change of including the city council in the draft agenda distribution.
That's close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
Did it pass?
Motion pass.
Was there anyone that didn't want to vote?
Well, yeah, it's those new, the new ones on the end are a little more efficient. We're getting.
Was all of your votes counted accurately?
Is everybody happy with the votes they cast?
Okay.
All right.
Item 14B, resolution number R25-95, awarding bid to Oberus and Company and the amount of $484,962.75 for lift station number 15, Westbrook relocation. This is CIP number 20-93.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R25-95?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-95. Any discussion?
Is there any starting date that this is going to be?
Yeah, they'll start as soon as, they'll start ordering the equipment and stuff as soon as we can get the contract approved, and then it takes a little while to get that. So it'll actually go into next fiscal year a little bit.
Is the amount, is the bid consistent with previous installations of the same type?
Yeah, we checked all that because obviously it's a low number, but just so everybody knows, it's on, it's right out front of their offices where all their equipment's at. So, and the engineer's estimate was, I think, 850. So the other two, you could arguably say were a little bit high. So it makes it look a little larger than what it is. But everything is included in the bid in that number that Oberus provided.
And it is consistent with?
There's just some areas that are cheaper because he can do it for less presumably because he's right there.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R25-96, approving professional services agreement with Alfred Benish and Company and the amount not to exceed $46,332 for construction phase services for lift station number 15, Westbrook relocation. CIP number 20-93.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R25-96 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-96. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, resolution number R25-97, awarding bid to Gearing Construction and Ready Mix Company Incorporated and the amount of $75,495 for ADA sidewalk improvements, 2025. This is CIP number 20-75.
Mr. Mayor, move that resolution number R25-97 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R25-97. Any discussion?
Just a quick, maybe for the people that are watching on TV, what does this get us? How many sidewalks is in that 75,000?
It's 66 ramps. So some intersections can obviously have a lot of ramps and some don't, but it's 66 ramps. So that's a pretty good number.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Good question. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on the first reading.
Item 15A, ordinance number 25-10, as authorized by the voters at the election held on June 10, 2025, to consider an ordinance to continue the city's existing 1% sales tax to commence April 1, 2027, which is the current sales tax termination date and terminate 15 years after such commencement.
Mr. Mayor, move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 25-10 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 25-10 by number only. Any discussion? My only question would be for the general public. Do you want to explain why sometimes we have rules suspended and it's only read once? And like tonight, we have an item on its third reading?
Sure.
Just to explain to the public, please.
Sure. Ordinances by state law are either required to be read three times at three separate meetings, or the elected body is required to suspend a reading or two if they so choose. But historically, and common practice is that if it's an ordinance which is changing something considerably, which isn't a housekeeping item, like, you know, echoing state statute or something, that it be read three times so that the public has opportunity to voice their position on that ordinance up to three times. And then if it's a cleanup, or a vote of the people, or it's making something less restrictive, then the council can more frequently suspend the rules if it's not going to really negatively impact anyone.
Thank you for the explanation. And obviously, this was the vote of the people.
Right.
Mention the number of votes, yea and nay?
Sure. The election results, oh, sorry. The, we had two propositions before the voters on June 10. The first was on the sales tax. 22,250 voted in favor and 1,142 voted against it. And proposition B, excuse me. This is just the sales tax, I'm sorry. So that's, those were the votes on the, just this proposition.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is right there.
There you go.
Well, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor suspending the rules, yea and opposed, nay.
It's passed.
Motion passes.
Ordinance number 25-10.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number 25-10.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 25-10. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to our ordinances on their third reading. Before we get into that, I'll remind everyone, this is the third reading of this ordinance. We will have public comment. We will ask everyone for their name and their address. We will limit any comments to five minutes or less. And we ask for the respect of each other's opinions, and we ask for things to remain calm during this evening's meeting.
Item 17A is ordinance number 25-08, to amend the city code sections 133.03 through 133.05 regarding firework discharge dates and times, sale dates, and to update the required signage at all sales locations to coincide with the changes, with an effective date of August 1, 2025. This is, this final reading was continued from the June 16, 2025 meeting.
All right, before we start with public comments, I would ask if any council members had any comments they'd like to make to begin with this evening. We would have that. We would then have public comment, and obviously, at the end and close, we'd have any further council comments. Let's start down on this end. Councilman Hemer, anything to?
No, not at this time.
Councilman Schilling.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to this ordinance, and I'd like to change the effective date from August 1, 25 to August 1, 2026.
Okay. Well, let's wait. Mr. Polinski, councilman, anything to add at this point?
Just wanted to thank everybody for reaching out. Heard a lot from the public over the past week. So appreciate everybody's emails, phone calls, and text messages on the issue.
Thank you. Councilman Barr.
I've gotten as many since the Fourth of July as I've gotten before the Fourth of July. And, but the change is, they don't like the people firing off fireworks. Well, now the change is, they don't clean up the mess.
Kind of goes hand in hand, so.
Yeah.
I don't know. All right. Councilman Jablonsky.
No count.
Councilwoman Alarcon.
Just like AJ said, thank you for reaching out. I feel like there were a lot of good conversations with a lot of people that called. So that was great. And, yeah, I feel like that's, that's what we have to go off of, whatever you call and let us know about. So thank you.
Kat, welcome back. I didn't know if you had any comments this evening or not.
No, yeah, I also want to say thank you to everyone for reaching out. There were a lot of emails and calls and texts, and I apologize for not being, you know, prompt to respond. My household is chaotic. But, yeah, very appreciative of the input. I mean, that's what helps us grow as council and as a community. And unfortunately, there's going to be some displeased people as well as happy people. So hopefully, we can reach the middle ground today.
Councilman Roth, nothing at this point. All right, let's start with those who would be opposed to this ordinance change, wanting to come forth and give their opinion. Opposed to the ordinance change which would go into effect this year, would change the dates to the 28th of June to begin the sales, to go to the Fourth of July. It would reduce the time to fire them off to 10 o'clock on all days except the Fourth of July, and it would eliminate the December, the December sales. And discharge. Is that, is that right? I didn't have it in front of me. I'm trying to.
I thought the discharge time, except for the Fourth of July, was 11:00 p.m.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. Okay, okay. I said I didn't have it in front of me. I'm sorry. So with that correction, it would be 11:00 p.m. The main diff, really, the main difference would be the three-day sale cut-down from the 28th to the, 25th to the 28th, and December having no, no sales or discharge. That is basically what's in front of us right now. We realize that Councilman Schilling will have an amendment for that, and we'll, we'll get to that. But let's have any discussion that would not be for that change that is being proposed. Come forward now and give your point of view.
Hello again. Rachel Tealy, 4230 West Raymond Road. The first three days we were open this year, I made it very abundant to talk to a lot of people, residents, non-residents. And majority of our customers were non-residents of this city, which really surprised me. Genoa, St. Ed, Platte Center, Humphrey, David City. They don't get input, right? They don't get a vote. They don't live here. But they all work here, and that's all revenue that is brought in to the city. Along with that, I visited with many family members that first weekend, the first three days. Because of how it fell, was a weekend, and family members, siblings with their parents, and kids with their grandparents were all in town because they couldn't be here because they all had to work on the third. And it made. And it made travel hard. So those 30 days that you want to take away do impact families, not just our sales, but families, depending on how it falls. I know we're here because of veterans and dogs. I have nothing I can do about the vets, except for thank you for your service. But the dogs, I'm struggling with this year because my dog just had surgery. My dog was put on medicine for his recovery by his vet. And so, just like me, my dog took gabapentin, whoops, gabapentin for nerves because she had cancer. So for people who don't want to medicate their dogs because of whatever reason, I find extremely, do you vaccinate your dogs? Do you, I mean, as a pet owner, it's my responsibility to care for my dog, whether it's during fireworks, or a torn ACL, or cancer. And so I just would like you to keep in mind, when you're voting, that it is my responsibility to take care of my dog, not your guys' responsibility. So, I thank you. No questions, right?
Hello. My name is Isabella Menendez, and my address is 111 South Parkway. So I know one of the big reasons, again, for wanting to shorten the firework season is because of pets. Well, I work at a vet clinic, so I can see firsthand all the things that you can do for your animal to help them through the season. There's medications that help a lot. But even if you do not want to medicate your dog, there are many other options, such as thunder suits, there's calming chews. And you can even, throughout the rest of the year, desensitize your animal to the loud noises. And I understand that fireworks may affect some people and animals, but there, again, are preventative measures and precautions that people can use for themselves and their pets to help. I myself even had a dog who was, you know, she did not like fireworks. So we gave her medication, and we would put her down in her favorite kennel in the basement, and she then had no issues at all. Lots of things can scare pets, other than fireworks, like thunderstorms, vacuum cleaners, but we would not ban those. It's, and I agree, it's a pet owner's responsibility to, to, you know, help their pets with noise aversion or with other stressful events. Fireworks were such a big part of my childhood, such a joyous thing for me. One of my favorite memories from every year usually revolves around fireworks. And I even have a cousin who lives in Colorado, and every, every summer, he would come to spend the firework season with us to light off fireworks because where he lived in Colorado, they were not allowed to because of fire risk. And he always said that every year, when he was not able to make it up for one reason or another, he was so, so sad. And he always said that he always, if he would have kids, he wanted to live somewhere where they could light fireworks off because it was such a fun thing for him to do every year. And I, again, also very, very sorry to those who suffer with PTSD or veterans that suffer with that. There are many options for them as well. When fireworks happen, it would, for me, what I struggle with is it would be different if it was something that was a surprise. But it's the same times every year, and, you know, people have time to prepare their animals or to prepare their dogs. It does not, the dates do not change, they do not fluctuate. It's a set time every year, so people know that and they can prepare. Yes. And I just feel like shortening the firework season is the first step to shortening it further and further, and then, you know, to a complete ban. And right now, as the firework season stands, it's only 3.29% of the entire year, including Christmas and New Year's, that we're able to set off fireworks. And I started a week and a half ago, so on the 25th, I started a signature sheet. And just in a week and a half, I have 700, over 730 signatures against this ordinance change. So I just think that shows that so many members of our community do not want this to, to go, you know, forward. And I feel like even if I had started it sooner, or if I had more time, I could have gotten so many more. So I just would say I am against the changing of the ordinance. And yeah, thank you for your time, and thank you for letting me speak.
Question, 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 young lady. You said there's remedies for PTSD soldiers? What are those?
Such as you could use like noise-canceling headphones, or you could ask your doctor, or if you have a psychologist, they could give you medication for that as well.
And what would the cost be of something like that?
For me, I can't say personally, but I know.
You brought it up, so I thought maybe you researched it.
I mean, I can't tell you because so many people have so many different insurances, or if they have Medicaid, I can't tell you what the medication will cost personally. I can't tell you that because, I mean, there's no way for me to know what it's going to cost for every person. So I can't tell you that.
But you would be willing to go in front of the veterans and tell them to do that?
I mean, I would say that personally, I feel like every person is in charge of themselves. And that is something that if, if it bothers them, you know, not only just veterans, but other people with PTSD, I feel like that is their responsibility to find something that works for them, to help aid with that.
I hope the veterans didn't go to war and not think of you when they were out there. What, what's, what's the cost to medicate my dog?
It depends on the size of your animal. But usually, for if you're wanting for the whole season, like I said, it depends. But I would say on average, maybe $30 to $40.
There you go.
Anything else?
Yeah, one more. Isabel, when did you say you started the collection of names?
On the 25th.
The 25th?
Yes.
And can I ask where you, did you just stay in one location, or did you go around?
Yes, I personally got signatures from people, but I also took one to every single fireworks stand. I thought that was a good way, if, you know, if you're buying fireworks, you would be more in favor of that, of stopping the ordinance change. So I took it to everyone that would take it. I took them there as well.
Thank you.
I give you credit for your legwork.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We've got a question from the audience, but you'd have to come forward to give the question so that everyone can hear it. Please, mayor.
The earlier speaker said that a lot of her customers were.
Mary, Mary, Mary Burkle.
Mary Burkle, 2658 Coomer Drive. The earlier person that spoke said that a lot of her customers were from other cities. And I was just wondering, the 700 and some signatures that you got, were they city dwellers? Or did they live out of the city limits?
So I can't tell you that for sure. But I feel like if you're in this community and you're buying fireworks from the stands here that are supporting, you know, even the, the sales tax that Columbus, the city of Columbus gets, I can't tell you for sure who, where they lived, because I don't have that on my sheet. But it's people who are buying fireworks here in Columbus, so.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Isabel. Anyone else to speak against this proposed ordinance? Please, come forward.
My name is Heidi Menendez, lives at 111 South Parkway, here in Columbus. I'm also against shortening of the fireworks sales, as there are many people here in the community, organizations that use it, also for fundraising. And it's beneficial for that. We, as a family, have also done a firework stand as a fundraiser and had made money to us and another family to send our two children to discipleship school across seas for a season. And that, and I know it's a great supplemental income also for families that have firework stands. They count on that money that they make every year and cutting off even three days. I have a cousin that sells fireworks, not personally here, but I know that if she, if they, their family was shortened from the town that they sell in, that it would make quite a difference in their income that they count on. He was a teacher, and she was a stay-at-home mom, and it actually supplemented their income so they could actually maybe go on a trip that year for a family. So I know that it would be detrimental to some families that do sell fireworks around here for an income. And I don't think that the minority that are against it in town should, the, the majority of people are for it, I feel, that they should have it shortened because of that. That's my opinion. I'm also a veterinary technician, a licensed one, that have been working in the field for over 30 years. And I also know there, there are good things that you can do for your pets. And you don't have to drug them. You can put them in safe places to muffle the noises. And it's no different than a thunderstorm, really. And for the people that aren't following the rules, then I think the law enforcement, there should be something for the people not following the rules, that the law enforcement should give tickets, such as that, that could count, cut down on those people that are going over the time, that they should be allowed to shoot them off.
Any questions for Heidi? Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak against this proposed ordinance change?
Scott Boer, 709 Lover's Lane, here in Columbus. I hope that when all of you got texts and emails and phone calls about the fireworks, that you took a tally sheet. Because this should be voted on by majority of the people in the city, not, not a handful, like taking religion out of school. But two of my friends got PTSD, and they say that it doesn't bother them as long as they're awake and they know what's going on. It's the 2:00 in the morning that something going on, and they're sound asleep, that sets them into a PTSD episode. And like she had just mentioned, the police need to crack down on those who are violating the rules. And two of my friends raise hunting dogs. The minute they get a new dog, they take it out and they start shooting guns with it. That dog gets so acclimated to the noise that it doesn't bother them anymore. And another one of my friends that's got a new puppy, took it out this year for the 4th of July, held it the entire time, dog did great. So you can acclimate your dog most of the time if you start young to the sounds around them, because there's thunderstorms, there's people roofing at 7:00 in the morning, cracking roofing guns, there's lawn mowers, like the vacuum cleaners, everything bothers dogs. But, but to say that the 10 days, the seven days is going to solve problems, the people with PTSD are still going to have problems, especially when people are doing it illegally at 2:00 in the morning, and more than likely, a lot of them bangs I hear, you don't even buy them in Nebraska. Somebody's personally making them themselves. They're so loud. But that's all I have.
Any questions for Scott? All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against this proposed ordinance?
Jason Teely, 4230 West Raymond Road, Raymond, Nebraska, 68428. I've spoken to you several times now. I won't repeat a lot of what I've said before. It still stands. I guess I was curious if any of the council members reviewed the police reports over the last 14 days?
Yeah, we actually have a.
Thoughts? Would anybody like to comment on it? Rich? I thought it was a great year. 32 calls. The vast majority of them on July 5, 12, probably due to the weather, rained out July 4. I know the show went on for some. Three calls from the beginning of the season until July 3. The problem isn't early in the season. People are respectful. They're following the rules. 22, or 25 of the 32 calls were after hours. One of those, or four of those were after midnight. People are following the rules. People are trying to be respectful. Retailers are doing their part to educate. We handed out over, well, I printed 2,500 flyers. We ran out. I shared some with some of the other retailers. We took every opportunity we had to educate the public. We agree with you. People that shoot at 2:00 in the morning, they suck. It's easy. People that are respectful, I don't have a problem with them. Like, this is how we celebrate. We've celebrated this way for 50-plus years. We've all survived. I'm sorry, there's a couple people that don't like it. Questions?
Any questions for Jason?
It's actually more than a couple, but it's okay.
Perfect.
So my question to you was the same one I had probably in the first reading. What are your solutions? I feel like the couple that did reach out to me were not really concerned about the ones that were at 2:00 A.M., just the excessive noise. I feel like the debris, like Charlie mentioned earlier, was huge after. So what are some solutions you have then?
Yeah. So I tried to work with the city pretty diligently. Several you were on the emails I sent, to get no responses. I tried to work with the police department. I tried to work with the fire department. We, we did hear back from Keep Columbus Beautiful and included them in our messaging. As retailers, we want to be part of this solution. We want to engage with the community. The personal responsibility that people need to take, we need to punish them. I commend the city. I don't know if the police chief's here tonight. They wrote three tickets. We wrote three tickets this year. That's a big win. Like, let's give some consequences. Continuing to educate the, the citizens, I mean, that's what we need to do. We need to enforce and educate.
I do appreciate you making the flyers and handing them out. And I did make an attempt to, I believe I made it to every stand in the city of limits. And I purposely looked for a sign that gave the ordinance, or any, anything with the parameters of when we could light fireworks and when not. And I think I seen it on every one of them. A couple were a little small, so I had to look for it, but most of them were, were legible and, and bold and right in your face. And I commend the ones that did do that.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's required, so hopefully, we all did it. Yeah, it's kind of tough, too. Four-inch block lettering, we, we follow the rule. It's a massive sign on all four sides of every, of every tent. So yes.
All right. Any other questions for Jason? Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak against this proposed ordinance?
Gina Boer, 709 Lover's Lane, Columbus. And I am against this because I'm one of the ones that has a stand. I just wanted to say that I'm so proud of all the other tents and salespeople here that have worked together to really try to make things better for everyone. We don't want people to be upset, or sad, or their dogs to be scared. We don't want any of that either. But I'm very proud of them because what I've seen them do is speak respectfully to people about it, whereas some people from the other side have been bashing some of us personally for vacations, which maybe your husband earned because of his 25 years of service at his job, and that we weren't here for the first meeting. I sent all of you an email immediately, letting you know that I couldn't be at that meeting. Is that correct? Thank you. I would have never missed it. We didn't even know this was going to happen until long before that trip was, was planned. We also had some people with PTSD who personally were going to come here tonight, but they have been trampled on social media, and they are scared to be here today, which I find very sad. Because their opinion was. Because their opinion was different from somebody else's. Their opinion is, I have PTSD because I fought for our country. I don't want people to stop celebrating our country because it affects me this way. And they were told that they, they shouldn't be speaking like that. I also had a friend who wanted to come, she wasn't fighting for our country, she does have PTSD, but she doesn't want her family and her kids to grow up not having the joy that she had as a kid before she got PTSD. So she deals with it the best that she can and she lets her kids still participate. I also don't agree with the people that are shooting them late at night, early in the morning, or maybe you don't, haven't gotten to know your neighbor well enough to know if they have PTSD, you can move and do your fireworks somewhere else. If you know your neighbor is upset by you, don't stand across the street and light them off. Find a friend that you can go to their yard or, or their place. It, it can, it can be a lot better. But I don't feel like that is the fault of us for selling for three more days. But it, it does affect sales and it does affect your businesses in town who, those people who come for sales, they eat their food or buy their groceries or the other things that happen in our town while these people are here. And I do know with her signature seat sheets, people asked me before they signed it, we're not actually from Columbus, can we sign it? And what I told them was, if you feel like you are participating in our town enough while you are here to buy these fireworks and that this sale change would matter to you, because this is the only place that you purchase your fireworks during the year, then you can sign that. Their phone number is on there, it shows you what town they're on. And that lovely gal, she went through all those sheets the other night and crossed off anybody who may have signed those sheets at multiple stands so that your number wasn't just, you know, ten people going around and signing them all over and over and over and over. She really combed through that list. So I was very proud of her and very proud of everyone else. And I thank you for listening to me and to them. And I also hope that those that are here who have issues can find some peace in any of it. I just don't know that three days is gonna make that peace be a whole lot better for them, because we can't change those who don't follow the rules. Thank you.
Any questions for Gina? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think we've heard. Just, okay, anybody else want to speak against this proposed ordinance?
Sarah Ablar, one thousand Woodcrest Street, Norfolk, Nebraska, and with Fly-by-Night Fireworks. I just wanna, as many, there are vets who are like, heck yeah, I fought for that freedom and they love fireworks. We have a lot of vets come, even, um, it's a veteran-owned business, I think it's called Pop Smoke, they're in Norfolk and they're also at Club Eighty-One. They love their fireworks. And according to data in twenty, uh, twenty-two, there are eighteen million living vets, that represents six percent of the American adult population. Twenty-two percent of that eighteen million served during peacetime. So, uh, right now, we have an all, the active duty, all volunteer force is one point three million in twenty-twenty-two. So that means less than one percent of US adults serve in, actively serve in the military and, uh, only six percent of the entire population ever served. So then of that one percent, not all of them have PTSD. It's a small percentage, or even if it's fifty percent, that's a small percentage and just as many fought for our freedoms. So, um, and if they need medication, they're probably getting them through the VA and they're not costing anything. My prescriptions cost me anywhere from fifteen to thirty-five dollars a month. So that's what I'm assuming it is. I feel for them, but, uh, we can't always make the rules for the minority or the exception. I think we have to listen to the majority. And I think that young girl who collected those signatures, I think, um, the first person that came up and talked to Rachel, she said, a lot of the people that came from out of town to buy here, work here. So they probably live in the bedroom community of Humphrey or Platt Center or whatever. So don't discount them just because they don't live here, they're still paying taxes and they're working here. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions for Sarah? All right, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Schilling, for making it, um, the amendment, if it does go through to after twenty-twenty-six. I know, well, thank you for bringing it forward.
All right, I think we will move to the, all right, this will be our last for those speaking against this proposal. Do you have anything that has not really been said? I'm ju- Well, just wait, okay. Please, go ahead.
Mariano Menendez, one-one South Parkway. Been part of this community for twelve years. I am a pastor and I was, my daughter was the one speaking. I really did not like the comment that you made. I think as a board of, you're sitting right here, it's an adult, you probably could be her grandfather, uh, that was totally uncalled. So I think it would be nice to have an apology, for sure. Now, on this matter, I, I myself had helped lots of veterans, people deal with PTSD. I know that the, uh, the, a hospital in, uh, Grand Island offers medication, therapy. I have worked with people with therapy and medication and again, I'm not asking how much they're paying, but I know that as part of people who have served our country, this is a benefit for them. So I think again, I don't, I don't want nobody suffering. I'm in the business of helping people and treating people with honor and respect, which I think that's not what I was portrayed tonight. So definitely, I think that if this is such an important thing, some of the votes that we just saw tonight passed by a thousand and some votes. In a couple of weeks, we had seven hundred and people gave their opinion. So if this is so important, let's give a voice to the community. Let's put it into a vote and let's say, hey, should we change this?
You wanna comment on that?
Because obviously it's something that it matters for the people right now. So again, I, I was so, so disappointed with the way, uh, my daughter was treated today. She was nothing but honorable and respectful to all of you. And this is again, so sad that it's happening in our community. Any questions?
No, but I, I do wanna address your comment and the, and the public's thought of taking this to a vote of the people. Please.
Sure, so I just wanted to explain to everybody, not really for discussion, but the mayor asked me to explain that, um, so state statute in Nebraska outlines what can go before a vote of the people. And, um, only things that are expressly given permission to city councils, they can put before a vote of the people. The, the true right of taking to, of anything to a vote of the people lies with the people. So the state statute says that a petition saying what that vote is has to be signed by a certain percentage of the electorate. And in this case, that petition could only include qualified voters that live within the city of Columbus. So, and then if a certain percentage of those bring forward a petition, the council has the duty to either act on that petition, so it would need to be specific, they can act on it, or if they don't act on it, it has to go to a vote of the people within so much time. So just, just for everyone's knowledge, the council can't just decide to take this issue to a vote of the people.
Absolutely, and that's, that's, uh, something very good to know. Is that something that can still be done?
So, well-
At any time, at any time, the people can create a petition and get those signatures, they would have to be, um, reviewed and-
Certified, yeah.
Yes.
Certified, and we've done that before. So how many signatures is that needed?
It is, I was trying to find the state statute here, it's fifteen percent, I do believe, um, of the registered qualified voters. So I think for, for the city of Columbus, that's about two thousand.
Wonderful.
And the point, the point was to make sure the public heard the reasoning behind what we were thinking in regards to a vote of the people. Cause, uh, I'll guarantee you, our friends on social media will say, we don't wanna do it, we could care less, we don't wanna listen. It's the state statute. There's only certain things we can do and this is one of those types of things, so.
And that's wonderful to know, no, thank you.
All right, appreciate it, thank you very much. All right, this will be our last comment on those who are opposed to this ordinance.
Uh, Nick Slack, nine twenty-five Lover's Lane, I think I sent you all an email where I kinda stand on the issue. I started a, uh, the Sweatbox Boxing Club, it's a free gym and, uh, we keep the doors open through donations, fundraisers and, uh, out of my own pocket. And, uh, this is our biggest fundraiser, so cutting that back by thirty percent of the days would be a detriment to, to my club and I think a lot of the other fundraisers that use fireworks as part of their fundraising, you know. Any questions?
Any questions for Nick? All right, thank you. Wait, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we do have one.
What percent of your budget is fireworks?
Oh, I'd say probably about fifty percent, what we get from the fundraiser, from that fundraiser. I do, uh, amateur boxing events throughout the state as other fundraisers for the club, but this is our biggest one, so. Any others?
Thank you, Nick.
All right, thank you.
All right, all right, we will move now to comments from those who would support the proposed ordinance. Please come forward. And even though you've identified yourself, identify yourself again, please.
Mary Burkle, two-six-five-eight Coomer Drive, Columbus. People don't always follow the rules, um, we know that, especially with fireworks, because there's usually alcohol consumption and partying going along with it. In my neighborhood and others in town, fireworks were being ignited on Saturday, July fifth, after midnight. Two years ago, a friend's porch was damaged due to people igniting a rocket that went sideways instead of up. And this year, in that same neighborhood, my friend reported that adults were igniting fireworks on the street, which left a small fire burning for ten minutes. It was only after they heard the fire sirens go that they tried to stomp out the fire. Thankfully, it was not windy and we had had rain earlier. This kind of activity is happening all over town and I'm not against, uh, folks, um, selling their fireworks and making money. We're not asking you to, to stop altogether, we're just asking to be limited by three days. Hopefully, this means that less injuries, less property damage and a safer Columbus. Any questions?
Any questions for Mary? All right, thank you.
Deb Potter, twenty-eight sixty-six Fairlane Avenue, Columbus. And I've spoke to most of you guys quite often, so, um, I have a few final things I wanna say, so I actually wrote it out to read so that I don't forget something or hopefully don't ramble on. I'd like to start out by taking us back to Monday, May nineteenth, where according to the city government page, it reads, "After much spirited debate and public input, the city council has approved a compromise ordinance that tightens the use and sale of fireworks in the city limit to balance traditional celebrations with growing concerns over noise and safety." The key word here is compromise. I'd like to give you a definition of compromise, which is a process of settling a dispute or reaching an agreement by making concessions, where each party gives up something that they want in order to gain something else. Four requests were made for this first reading, which was to shorten the days from June twenty-fifth to June twenty-eighth. We had requested that that be effective immediately and then also to shorten the hours to ten PM and then to eliminate the December discharge. No one, including the vendors there that night, minded eliminating December. Because the vendors had already had all their stock purchased, it was decided to start August first of twenty-twenty-five. And also because it doesn't get dark until later, it was requested to allow eleven PM and midnight as cutoff time. So there are two compromises done by the people wanting to change the ordinance. And I ask you, what compromises have the vendors brought forward? Also, the vote went through the initial reading, so in good faith, how can the council or at least certain council members do a complete three-sixty as occurred at the second reading? By the way, I'd also like to thank Brad Wangler, former police sergeant, who did research on times allotted throughout other communities. Councilpersons, you are supposed to represent the citizens of Columbus and especially your constituents. Whereas all licensees are residents of other communities except one. I was actually accused of lying about this fact when I received this information from our local fire department. I ask why you can't or won't stick to your original principles. Is it about money like the vendors claim? Timing happened to be in the favor of everyone as the approval for sales tax was brought up continuously and on people's minds. Many vendors stated we would lose huge sales tax revenue, which still seems highly unlikely in a seven-day period, because people are just gonna spread out their purchases. By the way, I'd like to know how many people in this room actually voted in the last election?
Good.
Good.
Okay, and how many of you people voted on the sales tax issue? That's, that's more than I probably expected. And then I would also like to know how many people in this room are registered voters? That's also, that's also very good. I would like to add that all these vendors are long-term business people, some being in business over half a century. You have survived Mother Nature, recessions, wars, tariffs, inflation and even COVID, and you're still all going strong. I also have heard from many of the vendors that they give back to the community through donations and event sponsorships. That's highly commendable, but I would also guess that many of you or all of you also choose to donate to your various charities and you don't own or work at fireworks stands. So if you really wanna donate and give back to the community, you find a way to do it. I'd also like to address a few safety issues. Lincoln stated that per Channel ten eleven, they had sixty-nine calls on the fourth, with five being burns and traumatic injuries. Omaha had fifty-one in twenty-twenty-four. I'm not sure what's actually happened in Columbus, because we did reach out to the hospital but did not get a response. But I do know that certain vendors have had injuries within their own families and yet they still, you know, support this type of thing. I would also like to touch on the fact that times have changed in the last few years, especially since COVID, which allowed people to hide behind a keyboard. People were in general much more respectful, courteous and friendly in the past. Mr. Mayor and council members, you can attest to this, as I'm guessing that's what played a factor in you taking away comments on social media. I especially feel bad for Councilman Jablonsky, who because he voiced his opinion, was likened to be a Nazi and also the subject of ridicule on social media by one so-called journalist.
Deb, I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up, you're over your five-minute.
Okay, final thing, I'm being told I'm unpatriotic, but I beg to differ. Upon reviewing the ads this year, I have had a hard time seeing enjoyment in Battle Zone, Flying Rage, Sky Ripper, Acid Rain, World War X, Thunder Bombs, Burning Skulls, Exploding Mosquitos and One Bad Mother. I'm not gonna address any of the PTSD that's already been addressed, but I will end this by saying, if anyone enjoys the poopy puppies or the naughty dogs, which are two more choices sold at the fireworks stands, we would like to invite you to come down to Paws and Claws Adoption Center, volunteer your time with the staff, assist that, and you can see the live, living and breathing poopy puppies and kitties, cause we have a house full. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? All right, thank you. And again, we are going, we are trying to enforce the five-minute rule, please.
Oh, I will be much faster than that.
Well, I'm just giving you heads up. Well, I'm just giving you heads up.
I live at three-two-seven-two Thirty-third Avenue. And there is an issue with animals. I totally get it, but I have to tell you a funny little story. I was mowing my daughter's lawn. It's day, the sun's out. It's a beautiful day. I'm mowing along, and I hear this huge explosion, and I figured I ran over something. And I look around, nothing, so I keep mowing. The neighbor next door was letting off fireworks, and I think he was probably watching me jump. Just one small example of how weird fireworks can be used sometimes. I do think that it's an issue with animals. My animals have a hard time with it. I have a hard time with it. I'm old. I go to bed early. What can I say? And people are letting off things that are shattering and banging on my windows at eleven o'clock at night. I'm only asking for three last days. I am respectful of vendors. They have a living to make. But we are not saying, no more fireworks. We're saying, just give us back three days. Let me go to bed at ten o'clock or nine and not have a lot of booming around. I heard a lot of comments about lost revenue, and none of us want to lose income. But I find it really hard to believe that the seven days that they have, that revenue will go up and your overhead will go down. And I am not in favor of extending this. I think it needs to be extended, the original ordinance that we talked about. One other thing, fireworks are not benign activity. I did a little bit of research, and fourteen thousand people across the country were injured in twenty-four. Eleven died. And we all know about California. Eleven people died in the warehouse. There was a couple of houses that went up in flames, different things like that. So it's an activity that needs to be monitored and closely watched. And I really would urge you to look at the quality of life here at Columbus. I work here. I live here. I pay property taxes. I vote. All of those things. And those three days increase the quality of our city. You know, it's easy to say, you know, I love fireworks, and then they go home and they don't live in the city. They go very rural or whatever. Well, I live on Thirty-third Avenue. Thirty-third. So the other thing is notifying police. To be really honest, I couldn't tell who was letting off fireworks in that neighborhood. So what am I going to do? Call them up and say, well, somewhere around on Thirty-third Avenue, someone is lighting off fireworks at one o'clock in the morning? So I think, you know, that makes it very difficult. You have a difficult job. We're just asking to look at the quality of life in our community, look at the lives of people like me that want to go to bed earlier. Give us just those three days. Not asking for a lot, but just those three days. I appreciate the work that you do. You have a hard job, but thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello. My name is Carmen Vandelwall. My address is eleven sixty forty-sixth Avenue in Columbus. I am a local mental health therapist, social worker. I am also a longtime non-combat PTSD sufferer, and I have close family members who are veterans and PTSD sufferers themselves. I'd like to speak in favor of reducing firework discharge days. Prolonged firework discharge and use has significant unintended consequences, especially on PTSD sufferers. PTSD, or post-traumatic stress disorder, is a complex mental health condition that affects a broad range of people beyond just military veterans. Children, first responders, and abuse survivors can all be affected by PTSD. Actually, according to the National Institute on Health, six percent of all individuals and eleven to twenty percent of all veterans experience PTSD in their life. So for many, fireworks are enjoyable. But for someone with PTSD, especially those with combat or violence backgrounds, fireworks can trigger deep emotional and physical responses. Loud noises such as fireworks stimulate the body's automatic, and I want to put emphasis on that, automatic stress response, or what you might know as the fight-flight-freeze response. This is the body interpreting things such as loud noises as danger and automatically floods the body with hormones like cortisol and adrenaline. This is not a choice. It's an automatic body response. So immediately, this causes things like racing heart, shallow breath, like I'm having right now, doing this presentation, muscle tension, alertness, but things like suppressed digestion and suppressed immunity. The stress response is designed for survival and not meant to last for hours on end and especially not days on end. The health toll of prolonged stress exposure is significant. It causes things like high blood pressure, inflammation, hormonal imbalances, weakened immunity, memory and emotional regulation issues, panic attacks, insomnia, dissociation, emotional distress, hypervigilance, and much more. These effects go beyond just an inconvenience. They are physiological responses rooted in the brain's trauma wiring. Longer discharge windows equals more unpredictability. Anxiety is heightened because triggers are unpredictable. People cannot adequately prepare or retreat. Sleep is disrupted for days on end, and people withdraw socially. People sometimes also turn to substances or other ways of coping. This isn't just about one group. It affects many: veterans, trauma survivors, animals, children, neurodivergent people, maybe people with autism or other neurodivergence or sensory issues. And I think that there can be a balance that respects our love for tradition but is also compassionate for those affected by those traditions. According to the National Institute on PTSD, eighty percent of veterans report being triggered by fireworks. And we talked, or somebody talked earlier about there being eighteen million veterans. According to the National Institute on Health, eleven to twenty percent of veterans have PTSD. That is one point nine eight million to three point six million, which is significant. Personally, I have suffered with PTSD for approximately thirty years. I have nearly a decade of mental health education. This holiday still affects me. I have all the tools. I know what to do. I'm medicated. Fun fact, one session with me costs two hundred and fifty dollars. One session with my psychiatric medication provider costs five hundred dollars. Luckily, I'm covered by insurance. Not everybody is. And not everybody who has PTSD is a veteran and gets VA benefits. I have all the education. I have all the skills. And my automatic stress response still activates. And that compounds the longer the days go on. So I wanted to offer information and experience from somebody with education, personal experience, family members who have been affected by it for years, and so on. Any questions?
Any comment, any questions for Carmen?
Could I have your name again, please?
Carmen Vandelwall.
Thank you.
Anything else for Carmen? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, I do have a handout with some of the information. I don't know if it's allowable, but I can just leave it up here.
You're welcome to give it to the gals at the end.
Carmen, thank you for having the courage to speak up.
All right. Anyone else would like to say? We're not going to get into a tit-for-tat and going back and forth. Right now, we're talking to those that want to come forward and support the bill.
Hi. My name is Donna Holmes, and I reside at twenty-five oh-three Timber Edge Drive at Whitetail Lake. And I'm not a city resident, but I have something to read from someone who is. Tom and Helen Cleary, thirty-three seventy-eight Fairlane Avenue, Columbus, Nebraska. Get back to the beginning here. Okay. It says, Helen and I have a difficult time making it to meetings, but we did send this email to the mayor, city councilpersons, and city manager. Good luck tonight, everyone. Dear Honorable Mayor Barkley and Columbus City Council members, we are writing regarding the fireworks ordinance that the city council will be reviewing tonight, July seventh, 2025. I am writing on behalf of my wife Helen and I, and we support cutting the number of days fireworks can be sold and discharged from ten to seven, banning the sale and use of fireworks in December. We have a son Jeff, who is thirty-eight years old and is mentally and physically handicapped. Jeff was born prematurely when Helen was only twenty-six weeks pregnant, and Jeff had an intraventricular bleed in the right side of his brain when he was two days old. Because of this bleed and his prematurity, Jeff ended profoundly mentally handicapped, and he also has physical disabilities. Jeff can walk, but he cannot talk. He is blind in one eye and has limited vision in the other eye. Jeff has cerebral palsy, which limits his ability to walk, and he cannot use his left hand and arm. Jeff functions at about the level of a one-year-old, so it's very hard to explain to him what all the loud noise is when fireworks are being set off. He doesn't understand what it is, even though we try to explain, and he doesn't understand why we can't make it stop. So to Jeff, it is just a lot of scary noise. Jeff goes to bed at seven P.M. in the evening, and of course, the fireworks can continue on until eleven P.M. However, in our neighborhood, they tend to go beyond that time. I know there are a lot of other mentally handicapped children and adults in Columbus, as well as people with PTSD and elderly people with dementia. We think that a lot of these people are also scared and bothered by the loud noise of fireworks, especially when they are only two or three doors down the street from them. Jeff is just one of the many that would benefit from reducing the days of fireworks that fireworks can be set off. Another item that seems to be confusing and needs to be addressed is whether or not fireworks can be set off in public streets. I called the police department and was told that people are allowed to set fireworks off in the middle of the street. I guess I didn't realize that, but that also complicates the issue. The other thing is that people continue to ignore the law and set off fireworks at all times of the night. It would be nice if our police department would be allowed to be a little bit more aggressive in ticketing the folks that continue to use fireworks beyond eleven P.M. and twelve P.M. on the Fourth of July. Thank you very much for listening to our concerns and for your cooperation in this matter. Helen and I ask that you please consider voting in favor of restrictions on fireworks. Respectfully, Tom and Helen Cleary, thirty-three seventy-eight Fairlane Avenue, Columbus.
Don, I just want you to know that I and the council did get a copy. We did get a copy of that. It didn't get to us till probably about four. I'm not sure all council members had an opportunity to read it. I did. I mean, so it, you know, it did get to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi. My name's Doug Williams. I live at thirty-two sixty-eight Thirty-seventh Avenue in Columbus. I just want to, I guess, give you guys some kudos for doing this as far as, and I think Deb used the word compromise. I think you've come up with some good compromises. The ten days going down to seven days, I don't think that's a huge deal. I took my grandkids to get fireworks six days out, and you know what? There are a lot of people buying fireworks then, six days out, so I think the seven days, people could live with that. It wouldn't have to be ten days. I've got about a twenty-pound dog, totally deaf, and he sat out and watched the fireworks, and it didn't bother him a bit. I also had my daughter's golden retriever, who weighs about seventy-five pounds, and he did get medication. And when he had to go out and tinkle, he still almost ripped my arm out of my socket. So yes, I know there are medications for dogs. They don't totally a hundred percent work, and I don't want to put that golden retriever in my basement for seven or eight hours and see what happens. So I think there's a lot of compromises that have been made here, and I really appreciate that you guys took those compromises into consideration. One last thing on the PTSD. My dad was a World War II veteran, and I can't tell you how many times I saw him hit the deck, hide under the table, you know, crawl in the backseat of the car. And it was tough, but I think that you guys have set up workable standards that my dad probably could have handled the noise going on till eleven o'clock or midnight. So that's what I have to say. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you so much.
Pat Cool, two seven five nine Seventeenth Avenue. I appreciate, I'm here tonight because I sat at home listening to the last, the first two readings on this and was complaining because no one was standing up for those with PTSD. And so I am so thankful. Excuse me.
Take your time.
Tonight, there was people that stood up and talked. So I'm not going to say everything I was going to say, but I want to say this, that I think what we're asking three days is a very small price for those who paid the price to have this freedom. I think it's, I think we owe it to them. And I just appreciate what Carmen said. I talked to a couple people. My wife worked with a lady who said this wasn't just an issue for her husband. It was an issue for the whole family, the whole family, not that one person suffered every year when this came around. I talked to another individual that said she talked to one gentleman that she cuts her hair or his hair. He had PTSD, and he said it did not affect him because he prepared for it. She said the second person she asked, he wouldn't even talk. So I think we see both sides of it. Some don't, some learn how to deal with it, and some don't. So my last comment is in consideration of those who not only fought for our freedom, but because they did, they now pay that price every day of their lives. So I ask you to move forward with this and pass this new ordinance for our community. Thank you.
Any questions for Pat? Thank you very much. All right. We will, any last comments? The distinguished gentleman in the second row there that I can introduce before he gets up here, Mr. John Lor.
Thank you. Very briefly, I came here wanting to not, or wanting to pass this resolution. I've listened to a lot of talk the other way, and I don't disagree with many of the things that have been said. But I'll address a couple of things. I came home from Vietnam with PTSD. It was a different type of PTSD. I was on a fire base right beside the demilitarized zone, and we fired twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And so you got used to things going off all the time. So explosions don't bother me. But what does bother me is one hundred and forty-millimeter rockets coming in, incoming. And that's exactly what a sound of an aircraft, a large aircraft landing at an airport makes when it decelerates and comes in for a landing. And for about the first year or so on, when I was home, I did exactly what this gentleman said, or what Doug said. I was under the table. If I was in an airport or something like that and something came in, but I got over that. I was embarrassed about that, and embarrassment will do a lot for you, and that went away. So really, I don't, I'm not suffering at all from PTSD anymore, and I'm glad I'm not. But it just seems to me like the one thread that has gone through this conver- that has gone through this conversation, whether you were for the ordinance or against it, was that the laws that are on the books do not seem to be getting enforced very well. And what I would suggest is, either you discuss this with the police department or get some new laws on the books such that the laws that are there, the times when people can stop or are supposed to stop, they're enforced. And I'm not saying you go down there and play pack cake with somebody who's doing this. You go down there and you find them, and you tell them ahead of time in the press. You tell them ahead of time in the press, this is what's going to happen, folks. You shoot that off at 12:01, and if we catch you at it, you better get your wallet out because you're going to pay the school system, and the school system always needs more money. That's all I have to say, but thank you very much for your efforts, and have a good evening.
Any comments for Mr., any questions for Mr. Lor?
There's a fire chief here.
Yes, he is, and so is the police chief. All right. Yes, ma'am.
The police chief, I want the police chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Gina Bor, 709 Levee Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
The hurt family member was mine. I just want to make it clear that that child of mine was not using that firework appropriately. His mother told him not to hold it in his hand, and he did it anyway. And when that was over, we have used that example. He set up a whole board at his graduation party. He also sent it out to every kid he knew in town to give firework safety advice, showed them all the gory photos, and the stands that carried that product, which was not mine, they do not carry that product anymore because not only he was hurt by that, but another, another child. He was 16 years old and knew better. I just wanted you to know, we did use it to help bring awareness to our city that, use them properly.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you. All right.
Police chief, could we have the police chief come?
Police chief, Fear. I see you back there, so now I want to see you up here. And there's that other guy back there by the name of Chief that is trying to hide too. We'll get him.
Oh. Identify. I am Chief Fear. I live in, I don't want to tell you where I live. I'm from Columbus. How can I help?
Can you tell us at what cost the city to enforce the fireworks this year?
I had two officers a night working overtime from 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM every night specifically for this fireworks concern, and we did, I believe it was four nights total. I'm not sure what the overtime rate was for the officers. I don't have those specific stats in front of me. I will state that we did make an enforcement effort this year specifically for the fireworks issue. There were some things that happened behind the scenes, such as codes not lining up, because this is something that the department hasn't done in a long time. So, it's a reasonably new effort for the police department, and there were some hiccups along the way where the city fines didn't line up with our tracks program, so we were not able to actually give citations. We had to actually give people court dates to show up in the court rather than be a waivable offense. Hopefully, this all makes sense. If it doesn't, find me later. But it's definitely a work in progress. I have heard a lot of comments about having more enforcement for fireworks, and it is, it is very challenging for our department to, first of all, to get people to cooperate to call in, and then on top of that, to give us the address of where it's happening rather than a random location. And the city Columbus is spread out, so it takes a minute to get from one part of the city to the next, and I'm not making excuses. It's just, it's just a matter of, you know, a fact of where you're at the time the call comes in, if you can spud it yourself, if you have the manpower to handle the calls for service, because on those specific nights, it's not just fireworks calls we're going to. We're going to our standard calls of domestic violence, our motor vehicle accidents, burglaries, thefts, domestic violence, so on and so forth. So, we tried to do a little bit better job this year, but it's definitely an area where we can improve as a department.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Fear? All right. Did you have a question? Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Did you have a question for Chief Gray? Well, you're not needed, Chief Gray. You can sit back there. How's that make you? Did you have a question for Chief?
I would like to have Chief Gray come up and just give us an indication if there's any, you know, injury-type things that happened that he would.
Right.
Hello?
Chief Ryan Gray, fire chief. What was your question? I didn't hear your question.
Did you have any, or can you tell us whether any, or the number of accidents or things that you were called out because of the fire?
To my knowledge, there were no injuries that we responded to. We did have one house fire that was caused by discarding spent fireworks in a trash can, setting the trash can up against the house.
Okay. That's, that's good. I mean, that's.
Any other questions for Chief Gray? You got to work on your presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. The police chief was up here longer than you were. Come on. All right. All right. We've had a lot of discussion. I think at this point, I will look to the council to see if anyone has any comments regarding any of the public comments that we have heard, anything to relate that maybe you haven't said yet before we talk about what we want to do with this ordinance that's in front of us. Councilman Roth? Cap? Yep. Cynthia's got something. She's got to think a little bit then to get going.
I do. Sorry. I will say that a few days before the Fourth and leading into the holiday, a lot of people did reach out, and I feel like it was more even, not even of the ones that are happening after hours of what the current ordinance is. It's just people that are struggling to get through those 10 days. So, you know, like mentioned before, at some point, it's a compromise, and we're not all going to be happy, but we have to find that point.
To the young lady that spoke, I guess I, maybe I misunderstood her comment as being flippant about veterans finding solutions on their own. I guess I don't know if fireworks is something that they should have to worry about. I do apologize if I came across unpolite, but I really thought it was very inconsiderate of her to use that term, for her to go out and look for something else. So, I apologize.
Charlie?
Thank you all for coming out and voicing your opinions one way or the other. It's a lot of work to get to some of these, and we appreciate your input because that's what's helped us make our decisions. So, thank you.
Hey, Jay? Nothing. Ron?
Only the.
Well, we're not yet.
Okay. I'll wait.
Troy?
I just wanted to echo what Charlie said. It's, it's good to see everybody get out and have a discussion in public because what you guys bring to us is ultimately the decision that we have to make, whether it's easier or hard, which this one is very hard for a lot of us. So, thank you for your time and all the emails and letters.
All right. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend ordinance number 25-08 be adopted.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 25-08. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like. You change the effective date from August 1, 2025 to August 1, 2026.
All right. We have a motion to change the effective date.
You don't have a second.
Well, we have an idea, and I was going to ask if we have a second. Do we have a second to that?
Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, but the original motion on the table needs to be acted on unless the people that made the motion and seconded it want to amend it. Is that correct?
They can withdraw their motion and their second. Ron can make his if they wanted to.
Thank you for clarification. All right. We have been asked to look at an amendment to this motion. Councilman Barr, would you remove your motion?
For the time being, yes.
The second? Who did say? I'm sorry. Rich, would you remove the second to have further discussion?
So then that. I've stated it before. We've dealt with this. We've come to a compromise. It's time to move on. This should have been settled three weeks ago. We just keep moving the bar up and up and up and up and up, and we either voted up or down, and we move along.
I would just ask Legal if that's where we are right now on the ability to move forward.
Yeah. I believe that there can be, and it's going to get complicated, but there can be a motion to, to allow the amendment. If that passes, then that'll be back on the table, but that's got to pass five to three.
All right. Please say that again.
Yeah. So, we haven't done this in a long time.
I agree.
But the, I believe you can, making motion to make the amended to what's being put forth, to change the language, to put that forth if the second won't be revoked or withdrawn voluntarily.
So, the first motion stands. The first and the second motion stands with this, but somebody can make a motion to still amend it, and if that passes with five votes.
Then we vote on what's.
Then you move on to vote on the new effective date.
Yeah. We're into Robert's Rules of Order right here, so just hold on.
So, does, does anybody want to second that? We'll do this by roll call, though. Don't worry about it. We'll take care of it.
So, right now, right now, we have a motion on the table to, for the proposed ordinance with a second, and I believe what Legal has said is we could then entertain an amendment to that motion. He's checking on this. We could entertain an amendment to that motion that has been presented, and if that would pass by five to three, that then would be what we would vote on. If it does not pass by five to three, we go back to voting on the original ordinance. And I guess we'll give it a minute to see if Legal can clarify that. Yes, sir.
Has there been a second for that motion?
Not yet, because we started talking. I guess we were waiting to see. We maybe, we could ask for a second from the council on that motion to see if it's going to even be needed for clarification. Or let me restate that. I am asking the council for a second to the motion made by Councilman Schilling to, in asking so, an affirmative vote of five to three would include that in the original. Do we have such a second?
Why do you keep saying five to three?
Because that's what he has said is required to make that happen. So, is, but it appears that there's no second.
Second.
Oh, we have a second. Now, we need the homework.
Yes, it requires a majority of the, must be Jermaine. This is, the motion to amend is what is acted on. It doesn't adopt the motion. It just puts the motion that was on the table into its amended form. This is from 12-1.
So, what I explained is the process.
Yeah.
We have, we have.
So, somebody can make a motion to amend the motion on the floor, which can be seconded.
We did, and we did.
And then that's the process. The way around that is that the people that would, that made the initial motion, the second would draw it, but that's not going to happen right now. So.
Right. So, the original motion was not, the second was not removed. In the process, we've had an amendment presented with a second. According to Legal, then we will vote on the amended, that's been, on the amendment that's been presented. If we do get a five to three vote, that will become what we vote on. If we don't get a five to three vote, we go back to the original ordinance as proposed. Any further discussion? All right. Are we going to do a roll call vote?
Yes. Just one second.
Okay. Just one second. Yes, sir.
Could we please define the motion?
I will.
We are going to. That's the one second we're waiting on.
A second motion has been entered by Councilman Schilling to change the effective date to August 1, 2026, seconded by Councilmember Lopez. A vote in favor of this will change the effective date on the final ordinance. Roth? Lopez?
Yea.
Alakorn? Alakorn? Jeez. You know I'm calling on you. Who, what is your vote?
Cynthia.
Are you in favor?
Nay.
Jablonsky?
Nay.
Barr? Polinsky? Schilling?
Yes.
Hemer? We have a tie vote. Mr. Mayor, are you willing to cast a vote? Otherwise, this motion fails.
I cast no vote.
Motion failed. So, we are back to the original motion of the ordinance, which would have an effective date of August 1, 2025. You can call the vote.
Do I need to read it again?
Electronically.
Wait. Can I put one in? I feel like that the last reading we were talking about, I'm sorry.
We were talking about how the December vendor person that was here had already purchased his fireworks for this year. Does anyone recall that?
I do recall that. You want to take, you want to try to change the date to January 1, 2026?
Second. I got it.
Second, 2026?
I thought that was.
We have a, we have an amendment being proposed.
I thought it was.
By Cynthia to change the effective date to, to January 2, 2026, which in effect allows this year's December fireworks.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
We have a second by Cap? Okay. Just a moment, and we'll have this written up.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to change the effective date to January 2, 2026. Roth?
Nay.
Lopez?
Yea.
Alakorn?
Yea.
Jablonsky?
Nay.
Barr?
Nay.
Polinsky?
Yes.
Schilling?
No.
Hemer?
Yes.
We have a tie vote. Mayor, do you wish to break the tie?
I will vote in favor of that change.
So, the motion passes of the effective date to be January 2, 2026. So, now I'm going to change this agenda item before you do the electronic vote. To the effective date of January 2, 2026. Okay. Did that update on your screen?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
All right.
So, now call your electronic vote, please.
Want me to read it?
You can refresh people's memory.
All right. I will read what's in front of us to be voted on. Ordinance number 25-08, amend city code section 133-03 through 133-05 regarding fireworks discharge dates and times, sale dates, and update the required signage at all sale locations to coincide with changes with an effective date of January 2. to coincide with changes with an effective date of January 2nd, 2026. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
No. Cat's the second on this amendment amended.
No.
No.
This is the, back to the original motion, and Charlie made the motion, and Jablonsky seconded it.
That's right. And we, okay.
And then they amended it.
They amended it.
Yes.
Voting is open. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. So the summary of that motion passing is the dates have changed for next year after January 2nd, 2026, to sales beginning on June 28th. They will run through July 4th. They can be discharged till 11 o'clock at night, and on the 4th, they can be discharged till midnight. And I can assure the public that there will be many hours spent in continuing discussions with our police department and on our codes to see what we can do to clean things up and even make this better. So with that, I thank you all for tonight's attendance. Although, meeting adjourned.